All right, good evening, everyone. We do have a couple of things to announce tonight. First, we're going to start off with a proclamation that we have. And I'd like to introduce a former Long Beach Police Auxiliary man, Councilman Scott Bendel.
Hi, good evening. If you look to your right, you'll see the Auxiliary Police Department for Long Beach. Just before I call up Captain Michael Spar, I want to do a little bit of a background there. The Long Beach Auxiliary Police are a volunteer organization. They get paid nothing. Every night, five days a week, they're out from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. patrolling our city. And during the summer, they increase those patrols. In addition to that, every special event that we have here in Long Beach is an essence made possible because of the Long Beach Auxiliary Police Department. They help with traffic, they help with logistics, they help secure the craft festival to make sure no one is touching any of the vendor's equipment or any of the setup. They're a crucial asset for the city, and as far as I can remember, they really don't get the recognition that they deserve. So I'm going to ask everybody, before we even present this proclamation, could applaud the Auxiliary Police. And with that, I'm going to call up Police Captain Michael Spar. Whereas the City of Long Beach wishes to recognize those who are committed to the betterment of the city and the lives of our residents, and whereas the City of Long Beach does desire to publicly challenge Long Beach Auxiliary Police Captain Michael Spar in recognition of his actions on Saturday, January 20th, 2018, whereby despite being asked to, he promptly witnessed a hit-and-run car crash. He followed the suspect in his own vehicle while at the same time relaying the location to the pursuing officers. It resulted in an arrest for aggravated DWI. Now, therefore, the City Council and the City Manager of the City of Long Beach, in recognition of your exemplary service to the community, proudly present this proclamation to you, Auxiliary Police Captain Michael Spar.
All right, thank you. We do have another announcement. I don't know if anyone saw Newsday, but we did have some exciting news about a proposed dock that, in collaboration with the Town of Hempstead, we're going to be building for the Long Beach Fire Department and the Long Beach Police Department. And Councilwoman Hume Diamond really spearheaded this effort. There are terms of it up here, so I'm going to introduce Hume Diamond, and I'm going to ask some of the chiefs to come on up and speak about this project.
Thank you. As many of you saw yesterday, we held a press conference, a joint press conference with the Town of Hempstead. Together, we're going to pool our resources. The Town of Hempstead has the labor capabilities to handle this project, and we have the funding, and we're going to build the longer way to dock up the back of the West End Firehouse. Obviously, this is a wonderful project for the entire Town of Hempstead and for the city, as it significantly decreases the time it takes to respond to water rescue. As Newsday reported just earlier today, we had 45 water rescues last year. This would significantly decrease the time it takes to rescue any individual on the water. So before, first of all, I want to thank the Town of Hempstead in particular, Councilwoman Diaz Pizito, who's the former fire chief of the Island Heart Fire Department, who's worked with me on ensuring that we can get this project done. It passed today, the Town of Hempstead, a board. So hopefully, in the next few months, we're going to be good working on this great project, and within the next few months, it will be completed. So before, just to kind of get some details about the project, I'm going to ask Chief Miller.
Thank you. For the project, we really have to thank the City Council, especially Hume Diamond, Councilman, the town board, Anthony Diaz Pizito. Both of them did a lot to spearhead this through and help us get it along. It's a beneficial thing for the community, for the Town of Hempstead, for the City of Long Beach, to be able to provide additional water rescue services to the community from Atlantic Beach to Point Lookout, from Long Beach up to Sprague Lake. There's nothing else that can be said, except it's a positive thing, getting everyone together. It's a great deal when we can put politics aside and have everyone work together for a common cause, and that's protecting lives. All right, thank you.
Okay. Before the City of Long Beach is updated, we do have one more item. It's February, and it is Black History Month, and Councilwoman is always like to go through the events that the city has planned for us this month, which began with a home swing dance, which was a lot of fun. We did a little swing dancing. So, Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Councilwoman Arambo. And I have to say that Councilwoman Arambo, along with Jennifer, had a great time on Friday evening, and they learned how to do the Charleston, but they actually did a little something else called the Kid and Play going on during the dance routine. At any rate, we had a wonderful evening on February 2nd, and that brings us to the fact that we are proud as a city to celebrate Black History Month. Many of you are aware of the fact that Carnegie Watson, back in 1926, established what we called Negro History Month, which then, in 1976, became Black History Month, and we've been celebrating that time ever since. And for many of you who were driving this evening, you'll recognize that the actual traffic or street light, the patent, was conducted by Garrett Morgan, who was an African-American man who developed the actual patent for the street light. So this is what we're celebrating this month. We're celebrating contributions that Black Americans have made to American history. And so I wanted to go over with you some really exciting events that are upcoming. One, on February 13th at 7:00 p.m., right here at the Long Beach Library, we have still be prized, a celebration of Black literature and music. Throughout the country, during the month of February, we have what we call an African-American reading, and this is sponsored with the goal of increasing literacy throughout the country. And so this year, Long Beach will once again partner with many other libraries across the nation to promote literacy. And we're asking people to come out and give a reading. It can be a short poem, it can be, again, some kind of fiction work, but the purpose is to read and to promote literacy. And so once again, we hope that you'll join us, 7:00 p.m. at the Long Beach Library. Second, on February 15th at 7:30 at the Long Beach Library, we have what we call Conversation in Black. This is celebrating Black beauty, and we're going to have a special panel which will really focus in on cultural images with respect to Black women and beauty. And so we hope that you'll come for this really interesting conversation. On February 16th at 7 o'clock at the MLK Center, we'll have children's book reading, and the reading is based on the book called Stunnae's Gift with Amma Yawson. Amma Yawson is an African-American woman who will be actually sharing and doing an actual performance with her book reading, and it's called Stunnae's Gift. So if you have children, we encourage you to come out, or if you're just really into African storytelling, we encourage you to come out at 7 o'clock at the MLK Center. And then finally, on February 23rd at 7:30 p.m. at the Temple Emmanuel, we're going to have a Gospel Shabbat. This is the second year in a row where we've celebrated, where we bring the African-American community together with Temple Emmanuel, under the direction of Rabbi Jack Zanahatt. And this year, we're focusing on the Nia Meyer Project, which is a Gospel aquapella group. They'll be joining. We also have a wonderful time, and we'll be actually singing with Lisa Arcanter. So we bring the two cultures together, and we encourage you to come out and celebrate with us as we once again promote Black and Jewish relations within the City of Long Beach. So we hope that you'll at least attend one or maybe more, but share with a friend that we are, as a council, proud to celebrate Black History Month with all of these wonderful events that are going to take place. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach on Tuesday, February 6th, 2018, 7:00 p.m. Reverend O'Callaghan, Councilmember Bendel.
Present.
Councilmember Bendel. Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice President Diamond.
Here.
President Arambo.
Here.
At the regular meeting. The President's back and City Manager Michael Haney, incorporating Captain Arambo, etc. will have a sleeping plan.
Councilwoman Moore.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, and equal to liberty and justice.
City Manager, update please.
Well, I will skip my comments about Black History Month, because I cannot do it as adequately as Mr. Councilwoman Moore. The Snowflake Race and the Polar Bear Swim, we'd like to thank everyone who participated. The Snowflake Race on Tally, of course, thousands of folks who joined us on Sunday for the polar bear plunge. As always, there was a tremendous turnout for this wonderful event, with the proceeds benefiting Big Wish. Protecting Lloyd Aquafur. Last year, I was proud to join County Executive Laura Curran in the fight to protect Lloyd Aquafur, our most precious resource. The city has been extremely concerned about protecting and conserving the Lloyd Aquafur, especially since 2014, when we first heard D.O.C. was proposing to reopen the wells in Queens, which we tapped into. Long Island has only one source of fresh drinking water, and that means more than 2.8 million people rely on the wells to pump water from Lloyd Aquafur. So we are urging the D.E.P. and the E.E.C. to eliminate the activation of Lloyd Aquafur on their land as we await real in-ground data from the U.S. Geological Society's groundwater sustainability study, until making any decisions that could dramatically affect the future of Long Island water. Our City Planner, Lucia Cofcuk-Caput, Puccio, not that name, I just got it, has just received the Author Comes Memorial Scholarship from the Long Island Chapter of the American Planning Association. This is the third Long Beach planner to receive such a prestigious honor, and we're very proud of Lucia. As we remind you, state of County Taxpills, our net Long Beach population only stated that payments were due by February 12th. However, since City Hall's closed on the 12th, we will extend the deadline to Tuesday, February 13th. We are still doing the food drive with the Clerks Association. There are boxes in the City Clerk's office, so get to this work for our project, and all of the food that we collect will go to our Island Hearts. And then the last thing we have, in between all the events for Black History Month, we're having the Long Beach Musical Festival on February 19th and 10th at the Long Beach Library. It's featuring some amazing local talent, which is really a fun time, so Long Beach is the home of recreation, and it's plenty to do this one, so stay out of the cold and enjoy all these different events. Thank you.
Thank you.
The first item this evening is a resolution authorized by the City Manager to enter trade contract for radio system maintenance with the most responsible entity.
Yes, this item, the main train metaphor in police and fire, the antenna had gone down, and it has radio problems. We're using our backup system. If that goes down, we don't have anything else to use. So this is very important, helping get this out, get this work done quickly, so we can have a reserve as well as an active receiver.
Any questions for the council? Councilman Bendel.
Just one quick question. This clause here for two-year renewal, does it renew at the same rate that's in the resolution?
I believe so.
Anyone from the public? Seeing none, next item.
I implore the Resolution authorized by the City Manager to enter trade contract for purchase of original equipment manufactured for motor parts for the city's fleet of vehicles on a as-of-need basis.
Okay, as Eddie Carlin knows, occasionally the cars break down, and they need to be repaired on a general maintenance basis. Fortunately for us, we have a very active and aggressive asset forfeiture policy, which means that when we arrest people for various crimes, we can develop a nexus from the car to the crime, we can seize that vehicle. So there's Lexus in our fleet that we got from a woman that blew a 4.3 for a second DWI felony, we seized her car. So we needed to find a way to repair these cars at an economical rate, not just going out for a specific part. It would get tremendous, tremendous discounts from many of the, from George Automotive to instance, Long Beach Oil Parts, that some of our parts are reduced up to 60%. So this was a very effective way to deal with the parts needed when we're only buying a small amount, by doing a complete bid for all the parts, so that at least they have, they're vested in the system, but we can get a real discount when we only need one part for Volvo or a Chrysler, Ford, Chevrolet, Dodge, Jeep, Lexus, Nissan, Honda, Mazda, Hummer, and a Smart Car, also BMW. So it really was a comprehensive bid that will help us in the long run.
And we've done business with that in the past?
Yes.
And by doing it as a sole, one sole bid, it allows for us to get the parts quicker and not have to bid for each individual part?
Well, they're a pretty large outfit, and they do stock a great deal of parts. They also are able to get parts from dealerships that they can, even with getting from a dealership, they can get the tickets on their CD stars.
Anyone else from the council that had questions? Any questions from the public? Sir, come on up, state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, hi, David Jacob. Just curious, I mean, I've been a county manager, and I'm sure I've also visited you, but I've never seen this particular height of item on the agenda before. Presumably, we haven't passed, incurred a need for water parts and found a way to fulfill that need without, as the council resolution, I'm just curious, why this has suddenly risen to the status of requiring a council resolution?
Well, we ran out of bids, so we have to approve the acceptance of the bid, and we've done it before with the same company?
No, we would, the city garage would just allow to anyone in the area, maybe a water parts store as an emergency, and by the level that was needed, that they didn't have to stop. Then, beginning of the year, they would have to guess what would break and what wouldn't. So we might have extra brake shoes and not have enough steering pumps or whatever, power steering units. So this was an opportunity to get the manufacturer to guarantee a percentage reduction on every part. So it's not just, you know, there's a thing for starters, there's a thing for power steering pumps, it's whatever FGM makes, we get at a very reduced rate, and it's much more, after doing the financial analysis, it's much more cost-effective.
So basically, it's an assurance from the Long Beach Oil Parts that a price of a given item is going to be X point percentage below the government rate of Latin credit rate?
Yes.
And do we know the principal exploration?
I have no idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, next item.
I implore the Resolution authorized by the City Manager to enter trade agreement for professional program management services for the city's transportation of all the extension of that project.
Just before I get to that, in the last resolution, at the bottom contract, it says, at the bottom of the resolution, it says, enter to contract with Christopher George Automotive. I assume Mr. George is the principal. Okay, this is a little confusing, I have to ask a couple of questions, something about it, but if you take the last two lines, 29,800 and 40,120, that equals to 65,394. No, no, that equals to 70,000, I'm sorry, that equals to 70,000. We needed 65,374 for the transportation study, and we had about 35,000 that line. So the extra 29,800 will bring us up to the 65,394. We also needed money in the transportation machinery equipment, so that was 40,000, two of that we had up to $70,000 transfer. On the 65,394, it's 100% reimbursable by the FDA, and the machinery equipment is fully funded at 90%.
So my understanding is they're requiring us and paying for this study, right?
Yes.
The federal government, because we have our own bosses, and we're requiring it and paying for it?
Yes.
All right, Councilwoman Arambo, any other question?
Okay, this one's a little confusing to me as well, so I'm just going to ask the per-council, if you can give us a little bit of an understanding exactly what these consultants do, and why we need this.
This consultant, by the way, is responsible from the federal government. It's necessitated, sorry, it's necessitated by the fact that the FDA process, the compliance process, has picked up steam considerably in the last few years, and these individuals, or this company, I should say, is going to be assisting us in the transportation procurement process, specifically helping us to comply with what's commonly, as this team said, laws, rules, and regulations that are commended by Congress and by the FDA. Does this move the remarks? Correct.
What a blatant term, and it helps us navigate the red tape?
That's exactly right.
Excellent.
Anything to pay for?
Anything to pay for?
Correct. Anything else from the council?
Thank you.
Any questions from the public? Man, please come on. State your name and address for the public, for the record.
Hi, Allison Puntchant. Okay, so I have a few things on this. I saw, I saw this on MidNet, but Jack Sherry had posted this on last September. Urban Engineers was the only person to respond. Where did the $65,000 number come from? Is that what they had offered to do this for? That's one question. Second, why now? Why wouldn't you wait for the permanent, like, the incoming city manager, wherever he or she is? Why wouldn't you let them structure this department? Because, you know, and this brings me to my next question, isn't this the job of the head of the DOT to maintain these grants? So just to be clear here, I'm not sure if any of you saw the RFP that was out on MidNet for this, for these particular services, but it's pretty much just maintaining what we already have, some of the grants that are, you could see them on the 2016 to 2020 step list, they're there. Who, who had originally applied for those, and why can't they keep maintaining them? There's no more red tape now than there was four years ago with, or with the previous one. Like, I'm extremely familiar with these grants, and this isn't a study. You said it was a study, it's not a study. This is just for purchasing our bus shelters, the new fare boxes, all sorts of things that we were told that we were getting, actually, back in 2013. Jack said that he had ordered them, but that clearly wasn't true, because they're on the next step list. So I want to know, who's in charge of the DOT? I'm getting a flashback of when I used to ask that. Who's in charge of the DOT?
You mean Charlie Fields with them?
Yes.
Director of Transportation.
Who's the Director of Transportation?
Costello.
Brendan Costello. Why is Brendan Costello, who's done this for many years, in addition to Michael Robinson and who's in the back, maybe he can answer this, why are they no longer doing this? They are both paid very well. Why are we hiring an outside company to do this?
Well, because this is a procurement function, as far as I'm concerned, this is it.
Oh, yeah, so these are things that we've already done in the past, that these employees have already done. You know, getting new fare boxes, getting the bus shelters, things like that, you don't need an outside company to get. It's not that much of rocket science. What you need is actual non-political appointees in this department, people who actually know what they're doing. So by not hiring the correct people, we now have to go out and pay. Where did this 65,000, oh my God, I would do this job for half of that. Like, who came up with that amount? This is really, really silly. Where, where did that number come from? Where did that number come from?
This money is reimbursed.
Okay, that's another thing, so.
Let me finish, you asked a question, so let me, let me answer your question. The money is reimbursed to us. I don't know that this money would be reimbursed for a salary. My understanding that this specific money is reimbursed for these specific types of consultants, because the FDA regulations are very complicated. Whether there's other people who might have this expertise, that is not what we've done here.
Okay, so this specific grant is actually not a hundred grant, this is an 80/20. So I'm really curious how, where that other 20 is coming from. Is there anyone in this room who understands when I say step, what that means? Does anyone, is there anyone in this room who understands how these grants work? Is there anyone in this room? Could you tell me who's filling out the national transit database every month? Is that still Michael Robinson doing that? Anthony, are you going to take lead and answer a question, or are you going to just sit there?
Your time is up, ma'am.
Are you going to answer any of my questions?
No, I might answer most questions.
You're going to just keep protecting the political appointees?
Your time is up, ma'am. Anybody else? Seeing none, next item.
I implore the Resolution authorized by the City Manager to enter trade contract for radio system maintenance with the most responsible entity. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second? I will.
Lloyd, Councilmember Bendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
Vice President Arambo.
Yes.
I implore the Resolution authorized by the City Manager to enter trade contract for radio system maintenance with the most responsible entity. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Lloyd, Councilmember Bendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
Vice President Arambo.
Yes.
I implore the Resolution authorized by the City Manager to enter trade contract for the purchase of original equipment manufactured or motor parts for the city's fleet of vehicles on an as-of-need basis. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Lloyd, Councilmember Bendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
Vice President Arambo.
Yes.
I implore the Resolution authorized by the City Manager to enter trade agreement for professional program management services for the city's transportation program and to make money. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Lloyd, Councilmember Bendel.
Um, Ms. White, just for a moment, I'm not sure.
I implore the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreement for professional program management services for transportation performance and to make budget. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Lloyd, Councilwoman Vendo?
If Miss Blanchett's correct, I'm not entirely sure what I'm following on here, so I'm gonna hold a second.
Councilwoman Vendo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Tye?
Yes.
President O'Leary?
Yes.
I implore the resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application wave or street parking requirements in progress ten forty-eight West Beach Street for a site full of coffee and smoothie shop. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Lloyd, Councilwoman Vendo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vendo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Tye?
Yes.
President O'Leary?
Yes.
And I implore the resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application wave or street parking requirements in progress sixty-two West Park Avenue for a site reading shop. Excuse me, would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Lloyd, Councilwoman Vendo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vendo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Tye?
Yes.
President O'Leary?
Yes.
Maybe we should call this meeting?
I will.
Second? Lloyd, Councilwoman Vendo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vendo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Tye?
Yes.
President O'Leary?
Yes.
All right, this is, as we all know, our good and well portion of the meeting. You're entitled to three minutes of uninterrupted time. Please be respectful, and as former president, Torres will remind us to maintain the form. Ms. Liz Tressid. Take your time.
There we go. Liz Tressid, Long Beach. I still don't know, not at all. It's February sixth, and I'd like to know if the city has guided what beaches would be used for access beaches for 2018. In my request for information gathered from the past two seasons, years, they are yielded no goals, no best practices, or plans. That was in here for a while. Secondly, I'd like to request the city's policy on social media. Is there a standard for residents or groups that have information placed on the city Facebook page? And why are city council meetings based upon the city Facebook page, when they occur? In January of 2017, RFP was put out. Going to backtrack this, because I was just taking notes. As you may or not be aware, the city's website didn't have the current standards for the W3C, public access ability initiative. So in January of 2017, there was an RFP that went out. I'm not sure if the company was hired, but today, and I don't know why it's always been, but it is. Facebook was being hacked, but a local web developer was on the site and then removed. My question is, were they hired without cc knowledge, or were they just totally around? No, okay. So, and isn't that RFP still happening, but it was in January of 2017, it's now 2018?
I'm sorry, Ms. Tressid, it was a RFP, I wasn't, I couldn't follow, it was an RFP for a web developer?
Correct, in 2017, the city put out a big, that was very specific on making our social media...
I know we did the Long Beach listens as a separate...
Yeah.
It wasn't for that. And something happened today, something happened today on Facebook, or...
Yes. I, I was sharing it in the email, it's a local company, so perhaps they opened the bid, their bidding process went out, they're doing a little work, I don't know.
Yeah, no one, no one knows. As far as, continue, don't you?
No, that's it, so what's the story with the beach for 2018?
So, we haven't, we haven't started our...
We're...
No, we, we will be starting the beach conversations in a couple of weeks. Commissioner Moreno is aware of the issues, we are looking at the beaches. We also have to be cognizant of the Army Corps of Engineers.
I'm on the Facebook meeting, I'm quite well aware of that.
So, as soon as we have that information, we'll let you know.
All right, thank you for your...
Thank you, Ms. Tressid. Ms. Kathy Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Station name, go ahead.
I'm here to speak about the gentrification project. When are, I almost said... When, when will we come out of the strata and print out clearly what this program is really about? From my perspective, it's about getting rid of all the poor and the so-called middle class. Now, I couldn't be wrong, but that's what I see, and I think everybody in the city should know, and all over, what's really going on. Because this is, is all over the United States, I've never seen it where it was all over. A movement to get rid of all of the poor people. Now, we know that history in Long Beach, poor working people who came out to work for people out here who wanted to live elite. They had to be out of the city at a certain time. That worked back then, but it's not gonna work that easy this time around. I don't see how it's gonna work. What is the plan for poor and so-called middle-class people? What is the plan? Because this is a very ugly situation. And I don't blame people who want to live elite, I don't blame them, I'd like to live like that too. But in this world, it's not gonna be that easy.
Okay, very basically, we cannot prevent gentrification with our existing zoning codes. So if we don't adopt a master plan, there's no ability to put a protection for affordable housing. There's no ability even to find affordable housing. So this was a comprehensive plan to do just that, prevent gentrification, to treat the entire community as a community, and to keep the core here, the culture of Long Beach. We have a blue collar community, we have a minority community, we have a wealthy community. We all survive very well together, our children going to school together. So that is, the whole purpose of the master plan is to develop a rational approach to the development of the city that protects all of those groups.
I thank you, but I'm still waiting to see the protection. God bless you.
Thank you. Ms. Deanna Fury? Station name and go ahead.
Dean of the area, Long Beach. I'm here to discuss the comprehensive plan or to just make some comments. First and foremost, on behalf of a number of residents in this city and on behalf of Long Beach neighbors against overdevelopment, we feel that any and all votes in regards to the comprehensive plan should be tabled until a permanent city manager is put in place. Nothing personal to anybody who's acting, but a permanent city manager, the one who's contacted, continues to carry on the vision, and to execute the vision or the zoning codes going forward, should be very much a part of the plan, the process, and the future of our city. Not somebody, again, who's temporarily in their place, and not, not to take over somebody else's vision to go forward. Somebody who has a better, or will have a better, clearer understanding of where our city is headed for the future. So I think that's what the residents of the city, we talk about the comprehensive plan, we talk about the residents first. That's what the residents want first. So before a decision is made, based on a news day article that came out, that I hope in two months, before you decide to do this, that that is, that person is in place and has had a significant amount of time to review that plan and agree, and make sure the residents of North Park, and the people of the Bay and the Canals, and the ocean, the oceanfront, and the west end, from, from, again, from one end of Long Beach to the other, is considered before this happens. I would also like to say that while the city's held seventeen-plus meetings in an outreach situation, eighteen just happened, the last meeting, if you noticed, for those of you, and there's a number of you sitting here, this day, this day, as we'll know, that there were four new people at that meeting. If there were forty people in that room, four people that meeting reached outside of, the rest of the people at that meeting were people who have been to that meeting on a number of occasions. Those people at that meeting are representatives of civic associations, of organizations, of groups of people across the city. And while you think that you're reaching the rest of the residents of the city, you're not, we recorded at that meeting, we're a city of thirty-three thousand plus people, we've reached through those meetings, to use your numbers, somewhere between fifteen-hundred and two-thousand people. That's a pretty, that's a very low number of outreach on a plan of this size. So again, I would say, consider those numbers before you think about going to a vote. Because I still believe, and we still believe, that there's a lot of people that are not, do not have a clue as to what you're talking about. The other part of that we asked in these sessions was specifically asked on a number of occasions, that the sessions would be a question and answer session, not a roundtable, because the questions that were being asked at other tables are the questions that maybe people didn't hear. You tried to accomplish that at the last meeting a little bit in the end, but I still believe that it's a divide and conquer. This table is concerned with this, this table is concerned with that, and at the end, you try to regroup. I still don't believe, I think the best meeting you held for the conference, and that was, again, the feedback I've gotten from a lot of people, was the meeting you held in North Park. Where you sat there and we sat here. I guess we've got to run that aside. The last, the last thing I would say is, before we do this, though, we're undertaking, the last question I have is, where, where is this... You told everybody here that Toro, that Toro was doing this study. And I found out that Toro was not doing this study, so I think you should inform the residents of Long Beach why nobody ever told anybody that that, that study on zoning codes is not gonna happen.
Thank you, Ms. Fury. Ms. Janie Odom. Please just station name and go ahead.
Good evening, Janie Odom. Commissioner, you put Congress on the fair and the acting city manager chair. My subject tonight is on the comprehensive plan. First of all, I'm from the concerned citizens of the North Park area. I would like to say to Ms. Patty Warren, you've been very consistent in working with your plan and your past and present staff. In your forebodder housing gentrification, we commend you for all the hard work you put in. For our draft plan was extensively rewritten to include key points on the economical issues needed for a community benefit agreement in power in the North Park area. But we come here today as the citizens of the North Park, we wanna know what is the rush to pass the comprehensive plan? There is still a gray shadow hanging over this plan. We hope that every council member is knowledgeable of what's in the plan, and how it will affect the complete residents across the city. Let's get it right before we pass this plan. Some residents think this is a nice vision and not a solid plan. It needs more work. Under the zoning update, community tours, work to prevent gentrification. This should be worked out first before we go to the zoning plan. Aforebodder housing and gentrification, as you know, there's a lot of zoning houses, and there's a lot of houses foreclosed, and mostly in the North Park area. So we say we didn't want to have gentrification in those areas, but it's even open for private developers to come in to raise up the prices and raise up our tax. And my last statement is, I hope you hear our plan, I hope you hear us, our plea, and allow us more time on this comprehensive plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Odom. Ms. Odom, any questions? Please just station name.
I need questions. I didn't come to talk about comprehensive plan, but I think I would like to state that I do agree wholeheartedly with the people tonight who spoke about it, that you should think of residents first, so many of the residents know nothing about this. And you usually preach into the choir, you know, it's all the same faces that show up at these meetings, and it's a very, very small number of residents that show up, so I hope you think of the residents first. What I did come up for was a clarification of the rules of good and welfare versus the rules of speaking at a resolution. So I know that in the past, you have said that during good and welfare, you can ask questions or make statements, but you won't necessarily get an answer. Is that still true?
Yeah, technically, it's three minutes of uninterrupted time.
Okay, and sometimes you answer people, and sometimes you choose not to. But when you have a resolution that's being discussed, and you ask other questions from the council, and other questions from the audience, you usually answer them, don't you?
You just wait if I can, yes, or if someone else can?
Yeah, so I just wanted to state that I think it was very dismissive and very disrespectful to Allison Blanchett, who seemed to me to have an awful lot of knowledge to share. And I think after hearing what she had to say, you probably should have tabled that, or at least the people she mentioned who are involved should have come up and spoken to that. If people that are already on the payroll have already done this before, it doesn't make sense to hire outside people to do it, in my opinion. And I think it was just disrespectful when she said, will you answer my questions, and you said no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Odom. I have all the questions who are already answered. The FDA is requiring us and funding the consultants or, and paying for it, so I thought I'd ask and answer. And I'm not gonna respond to grandstanding.
Okay, the, the, I'm not grandstanding, this is...
No, I'm not, I'm not saying you are.
And Ms. Diamond had said that it's gonna be paid for, and that just reminds me of when the trees were dying, and Jack would say, we're replacing them for no charge. They're still dead trees, you know. If it's being paid for by somebody else, somebody's still paying the money, and it's wasteful, so...
But they're requiring it.
Got it, thank you.
Ms. Blanchett? Please just station name and go ahead.
Allison Blanchett. So, yeah, comprehensive plan, I don't think that you guys should be even entertaining this yet, we don't have a city manager. Sustainable Long Island doesn't even exist, that Toro law thing doesn't exist, we don't have a planning team. But thank you, Lenny, for saying that. I am used to being dismissed by Ann Marano. And pretty much used to it at this point. That, that's in the back. But anyways, why don't we go back, and why don't you answer those questions? Because that's not, I, I wanted to know, because the grants, these specific ones for the FDA, this wasn't something out of the ordinary, this wasn't a, a study. This is that you just have to, like, when you're getting federal funding, but clearly you, you have no idea what you're doing up there, I get that. But like, I, I can't even look at you right now. Somebody explain to me how you can vote on things that you have no, and I'd like to thank you, John Vendo, for being the only one with common sense up here. How you can vote on things you know nothing about. I'm over here telling you that I happen to know about these grants, and that these are generally eighty-twenty, unless they're actually, like, specific, and then they can go to ninety-ten. So where's that other twenty coming from, and where did that, you know, what was it, sixty-four thousand, where did that number come from? You only had one answer to that bid that was up on the RFP that Jack put up on bin.net. You know, like, where did that number come from? Could you have put that bid back up if you were really hell-bent on having an outside company come in and do this? Because you have no confidence in your head of DOT, who you don't let write the grants. You know, we, we spent enough money on the DOT, thanks to Jack Schirman, and those lawsuits, the multiple lawsuits. You know, you must know what I'm talking about, ecstasy. So how about some answers? Do you have any idea, anything about this disfunding, or were you just kinda like nodding your head and going along?
Please finish your time.
You definitely don't know much about those grants, because you've consistently violated them, kind of like with, you know, the private use of chargers. But hey, that's okay, it's Michael Robinson doing it, and he gets protected, doesn't he? So I'd like to thank you for voting no on that, and being, you didn't know what this was about, because clearly the other people on this council, and I hate to say this to you, Miss Moore, but you as well, are guilty of this. If you don't know what the... If you don't know what these are for, how many other things do you vote in for that you know nothing about? All of you. Shameful.
Mr. Jay Jackson. Please just state your name for the record.
Sure, Jay Jackson. Uh, maybe a little just joining, but, uh, preliminary, a total of a question to you. Why do you guys refuse to tap into the expertise of the locals who have vast knowledge of certain things, like Ms. Blanchett, at the expense of all of us? You could talk about it, paid for by some of the grants, whatever the case may be. Bottom line is, even that grant might as well not have been tapped paid out of our pockets so much. Second thing is, tapping into Mr. Ted's comments about the aquifer issue. Obviously, we're all well tuned to that. It's a significant issue, will be for generations to come, but while we're, while we're grandstanding, period, who's not just talking about the condition of our aquifers, we are ignoring our rotting water delivery infrastructure that is, I've been hearing from administration after administration, councillor after councillor, about how our stand pipes are on the verge of collapse. Our water towers are well past their service life. Forget about getting your picture taken at news conferences. Let's get our act together and worry about cleaning up our infrastructure. I've also seen Speaker President Speaker parade up to this council and demonstrating to you guys the problems that we have with our water quality, only to be blown off and dismissed as, if nothing, don't worry about it. So let's perhaps look a little more locally before we worry about the condition of the aquifers. And the third thing is, I understand you guys have written down the city manager candidate list to a shortlist. I hope I'm wrong, but I've heard Mr. Agstese, of all people, is on that shortlist. I would first remind you guys that there is still a requirement in place that city managers reside at City of Long Beach, and I'm sure you're aware that Mr. Agstese does not. Second thing is, the record of performance that Mr. Agstese has in office certainly doesn't merit promotion to city manager. In fact, in the real world, he'd probably have fired one company. But this is Long Beach, and I recognize that he has damaging material on some of you people, and thus he is insulated and he's heavily covered with the competence of it. But nevertheless, I would urge him to strongly consider not hiring Mr. Agstese, even on annual basis. He's the guy whose basic mistake put us on the hook for a fifty million dollar judgment among his many other political legal failures. Not the right guy for the job. Don't even know how you guys would be considering.
Ms. Miranda, if you weren't here at the last meeting, could you please come up and just talk real briefly about the water quality and the, the rust issue we had? Continue to have stand pipes, I believe, which were placed. Just real brief, thank you.
Yes, so, you know, when you draw from the Lloyd Aquifer, there's a lot of natural iron that exists in the water. Many people may not know this, but we have one central treatment plant to remove that iron. So when the water goes out of our plant, it meets more than meets all the standards and quality requirements of the EPA, the Nassau County Health Department. Unfortunately, we do have an older distribution system. And as we go through and do road replacements, including roadworks, we replace old online cast water mains with ductile line cement line mains to prevent buildup of percolation. Percolation is a natural process of lines buildup on the mains. When you get a disturbance in the main, such as a fire somewhere or somebody opens a hydrant for a street sweeper, you get a reversal of flow, this disturbs the main, and these sediments come out. A lot of people have been kind of led by filter companies that, you know, filters will solve all your problems. There's really nothing to know for you to filter out. A lot of times when a person comes up with a filter, paper filter, naturally it's going to be full of iron because it's running for about three to four months. And this is what happens if it takes the iron out of the water. A lot of times people get discolored water problems in their hot water tanks because their hot water temperature settings are way too high. You know, it shouldn't be over a hundred and twenty degrees in this. Disrupts the balance in the water, and you will get some sediments out of the water. There are natural solars that exist in all water supplies, suspended solars. And without those suspended solars, you would be drinking distilled water, and that would be taking minerals out of your, out of your, out of your body. So, water is perfectly safe. Yes, we do have a lot of water needs over time that may need to be replaced. We are addressing them. We are addressing the water tank issue. As a matter of fact, we just had a report completed with the replacement cost for a new water tank and to also increase the amount of storage we have in the event of an emergency so that we can run much longer before we have to worry about kicking in emergency generators. I would not be so quick to dismiss the whole issue about the Lloyd Aquifer. The Lloyd Aquifer is the sole supply of water here on the barrier island. And anything that could disrupt that, we should be very concerned about. And I'm glad that our, our leaders around there speaking up about it, because this will protect not only Long Beach, but Atlantic Beach, Leo Beach. We all rely on this barrier island on Lloyd Aquifer. So I think it's very important that we pay attention to that problem. So I think in the next couple of years, we'll have some projects coming forward where a lot of this infrastructure will be, be replaced. It's impossible to replace sixty miles of water main all at once, but we are doing it on a regular schedule. And we're doing, like, newer mains that aren't going to. Cast line mains have a tendency to break during cold weather stops because you get ground movement, and it's cast line, so we'll get a sheer break in it. New ductile water line mains are very flexible, and they're not susceptible to those kind of breaks. Quite surprisingly, with the cold winter that we just had and the deep frost, I expected many, many water main breaks, and we really only had a few. We did have some frozen water services that was due a lot, a lot of times because of cuts and caps that were done for raising homes. And in fact, some water service went back in. The lines are now just protected, but this extreme cold weather would happen. So, I certainly, I, as a resident, if somebody's a resident in Long Beach, they should have absolutely no fears of drinking our water. Our water meets every standard that there is. So, I'm very confident, and I've been in the water supply business for almost forty years. So I'm very confident in our water.
I hope that answers some questions. Thank you very much.
The fifty million dollars, people, I could bring a lot of infrastructure.
Mr. Dan Fraser? Please state your name.
Dan Fraser. I just want to mention something that's been weighing on me all day long. It concerns the city clerk. I have a credit.
Thank you, Dan. Ms. Minnie Dolberg. Please just state your name.
Hi. Hello, everybody behind me. Hello, everybody online. Good to see you up here, John. Um, so I have two things I can do to help on a topic about the, um, I'm lost now.
Still moving.
The, what? I don't even know. Let me just breathe deep. Okay. I'm just going to stay on topic. Um, so I, last week, two weeks ago, we were talking about, can I make this time? And you just said about the beach, what this customer was just talking about? So you said in a couple of weeks, we're going to talk about the beach, right?
No, no, we're going to have internal meetings preparing for the beach season.
Okay, so I wanted to discuss, you guys did the pilot, the pilot program for the beaches, for the, for the restrooms. Two for two years. I was just curious what the pilot program worked out? What you guys learned from the pilot program? And how long the pilot program is going to go for? Because you guys did it for two, two thousand fifteen, or sixteen and seventeen, and now we're going on eighteen, and when is it ending? And what you guys learned from the pilot program? And where are the, what's the plan for the ADA restrooms? And where they're going to be? And all of that good stuff, where the mats are going to go?
Specifically, have you talked about the West End bathroom?
Well, the West End bathroom, what I'm, what I'm understanding is that Tennessee, and I'm curious as to how you guys decide where the bathroom goes? Is it from the, where the ADA restrooms are at the restaurants? Is it where their, where, where people are in their home? How do you figure that out?
Um, when, when you're finished, I'll have Mr. Miranda come back up and discuss the, the West End bathroom plan.
Okay, okay, and how about the mats?
The mats, I think, are still under discussion.
Is there a committee or something that all this is decided on? And how do you guys figure this out? I don't, I'm just very confusing to me.
No, the departments that have internal, internal part of the process are invited in to discuss both the products and the installation. So DPW for the products themselves would be involved. John's our licensed engineer, so he understands the whole ADA compliances. The beach maintenance is upon that puts them out and engages them. So they would be involved. Sanitation also does operate on our beach, so they would have to be involved. So they, they, it's the people that have impact on the issue that are in these meetings.
Okay, can you, can we find out about what the pilot program proved? Since it was ongoing for two years?
Thank you for raising that question, because you may recall back in summer of twenty sixteen, I spoke to the importance of assessment and that we would have data. I have not seen any data with respect to this pilot program, and obviously I would like to see it, because last summer, as a result of some of the unfortunate incidents with respect to the Mobi Mats, I had called for an advisory committee, which would be comprised of community members such as yourselves, so we can have some, some, some real feedback from the residents. Because there are so many different ways we talk about the ADA, we talk about rights for people who may have challenges. There are different needs. And so I still feel strongly about having that committee and having input from people like yourselves. We need to use that and partner with all of the, the actual departments that are here so that we can maximize access for all residents.
For everybody, for all residents. I think, I think the mats last year were great to have them on the beach. I think they need to go to as close to the water as possible so everybody has the ability to put some part of their body close to that water. It's not fair that it goes in the middle. Not even in the middle, actually, barely down that sand. I hope that none of you have to experience anything. I don't miss that, as I start.
Ms. Miranda, could you please discuss some of the challenges with the Mobi Mats? But, and then also the touch on the West End bathroom a little bit? Which is a requirement, and there was some talk about why even have a West End bathroom, but we are required to have it on the beach.
Uh, just, in, in general, with the Army Corps project going on, working with the D E C, just a couple of things. Anything that we place on the beach, including Mobi Mats, requires permit from the New York State D E C. And New York State D E C actually frowns, the coastal, the roting people frown, frown on Mobi Mats on the beach because of the, you know, sand blowing, these are nature. Big problem for us with the Mobi Mats is, one thing, in Long Beach, we could really pride ourselves on having some of the most beautiful beaches in the world. People have been all overcome, and they, they just can't believe the condition of our sand. Our sand is like powder powder. And the reason is because the amount of maintenance that we do on the beach. And that's one of the big issues that we have with the Mobi Mats. We can't maintain the beaches as easily with the Mobi Mats down. And we can't bring the Mobi Mats all the way out to the, to the tide because it definitely, uh, has, creates a big problem with tideline debris. As a matter of fact, we ended up destroying one of the Mobi Mats this year trying to clean up the tideline debris. It just interferes with the equipment that we use. So we have to come up with a way to give people access at certain beaches. We're going to have to get permits for those Mobi Mats. And then again, remember, we, we do have lifeguards and we do have special wheelchairs to take people from the end of the Mobi Mat down into the water, which, and they're available within five minutes. It's a quick protocol to the lifeguards, and they get them down. As to the bathrooms, this is a more wider issue to have discussed. We actually have been granted another one point seven million dollars from FEMA to finish building the permanent bathrooms and the new lifeguard station. So there will be new handicap accessible bathrooms going in at New York Avenue off of the Boyd Walk, at, at Neptune, and also on the West End. Nassau County Health Department requires us to have at least one bathroom on the West End. Just a little history on the bathrooms on the West End is, the original bathroom was a lifeguard shack at the end of Virginia Avenue. One, Chauncey's was around the bar, I believe it was at Georgia. Chauncey's didn't want another bathroom built because they felt it would interfere with their business, and they had offered to the city that they would allow people to use the bar if they needed to go to the bathroom, and they put the city, put it off. This is my city of history. And they put off building that bathroom. But when Chauncey's closed, they then made Virginia Avenue into a full-scale bathroom. Sandy came along, wiped out the bathroom, and we've been putting temporary bathrooms down to the beach there, also at New York and Neptune. The State D E C has told us they will not permit those bathrooms in perpetuity. In other words, we have to grant for, you know, put an end to putting those bathrooms and actually build permanent bathrooms. The other thing is, because of the dune, these bathrooms are going to have to be built above the base flood elevation. So that means building the bathrooms over the, over the dune. So, the bathroom is at, and what we look at is replacing the bathrooms. And we're trying to get, we're actually have the piling diagrams put into the contract with the Army Corps for the sand replenishment. Because if we don't get the piles put into the bathrooms, it's going to take another two or three years to get the mission approved and everything after the Army Corps is done. So we thought it was, made sense to have our engineers develop the bio plans for all three bathrooms. This way, they could be put in the contract with the Army Corps and they'll go and put the sand replenishment, which will speed up getting these permanent bathrooms. On the West End, I happen to have a bathroom on that's accessible to the beach. As you know, ninety percent of the homes look over the dunes and have beautiful views of the beach. So it becomes problematic on locating the bathroom. So Deputy Commissioner and myself spent a couple of days looking at every end of the beach. And we came up with a plan to locate the permanent bathroom on the West End off the crosswalk at Minnesota, which is handicap accessible. We designed a handicap accessible bathroom for there, and we blended it in with the walk, walkway, that's large renderings that I was able to share with the West End Navigators Association. And we were trying to move on with that. We need a seal, it was called a seal permit to place that bathroom. We're hoping to have that bathroom placed by this, this summer. But we need to begin the permit process, which we're in the process of putting the documents together. And then the two bathrooms at Neptune and New York will be placed when the dune is done, you know, and the sand replenishment. So the dune already exists on, on the West End, obviously. So, I, I think you'll see some resolutions to this. As to the Mobi Mats and the plan location, we're looking at a couple of ideas. We've got to, we've all kind of have to get permits for them also. But we have to be able to do it in a way that we can continue to maintain the beauty of our beaches and, and, and still, you know, afford access to those people indeed. So we're, we're working on a lot of things hopefully in the next couple of weeks or so, or next month, we'll have a final plan as to where we'll make the beach access. And then part of that is also making sure there's enough handicap parking available so that people can access right there where the Mobi Mats are going to be. And, you know, so there's a lot of things that go into it. You know, if anyone has any other questions?
By moving the bathroom from Virginia to Minnesota, one of the issues with the residents of Virginia was the traffic that goes down their block because families tend to use that bathroom. Will there be something included in the bathroom plan to mitigate that for residents of Minnesota?
Yes, one, one of the issues at Virginia also was, that was one of our busiest ticket booths in terms of selling tickets. So as we do with Virginia last year with temporary bathrooms, there will be no ticket sales at Minnesota. So that will cut down the number of people that come there because any of the visitors that come down to West End Beach look for one of the four streets that they can buy tickets on. And we're trying to distribute that better. Last, in speaking to Phil Gorn, who runs all the ticket takers, the year before, Virginia Avenue did three thousand tickets, and the other three locations did a thousand. and the other three locations did a thousand tickets. So you can see the difference. It's almost a three on one compared. So, uh, we're, we're trying to keep that spread out again. Additionally, the bathroom at, on the west end, as opposed to bathrooms that are off the boardwalk, will be more like the bathroom on Pacific and Long Beach where, um, the, the bathroom will open till morning, they're closed by late day. In addition, the ones on the boardwalk stay open all night for the runners. The bathroom in Minnesota will be shut at six P M. when the lifeguard's off duty.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Louie Bass? State your name.
Good evening, Lou Duvall. Happy birthday, Dave. Um, a couple of quick things. Um, the, the new dock off of Indiana is a great idea. I know years ago, we used to have a dock by the hospital. Is there any plan, or could you look at the plan that possibly have any, like, a dock or something there? So if there's an emergency and they need to get to someplace quick as opposed to running up to Ocean Side or, you know, whatever.
I, I brought the plan. Commissioner Cummins, there's going to be a dock. Can you just shake your head at the hospital? There is one there.
There is one there. Oh, good. Okay. That's not a problem. Um, this is for the police mission. Um, the lights going west are not the same. They used to be two lights. I'm sure you're aware of that. Is that something the city does? Or that's, that's county?
Well, we, uh, were in the consultant, but we timed those lights a couple of years ago when we went to the thirty mile, uh, twenty-five mile speed limit. So I'll contact, uh, the vendor and have them contact Nassau County Traffic Signal Timing and see if I can get those lights suggested.
Okay, good. Another question to you. Um, does nine one, if you dial nine one one, is that where Nassau County goes to, to Long Beach?
It goes to Long Beach unless you use the cell phone.
Oh, okay. Okay. That's, I took that, that was my wife.
So phones will go to Nassau County and then you just ask for a long transfer. But all our homes are, are wired into the Long Beach nine one one system.
Oh, okay. Good. Um, another thing, when everybody speaks, if they speak close to the mic, it's easy. Then if you act like this, it's just a general statement. Um, and the last thing, that comprehensive plan. Um, I didn't, I wasn't at the last meeting on that, but I think it is a good idea to wait until we have a permanent, go fence you, Mike, but, no, permanent, someone just, you, if you gotta get somebody in there and you're going to go back to be chief of police, so, uh, commissioner, whatever you're entitled to. So I'm just, I think that's a good idea to wait on that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duvall. Okay, that's it for this evening. Thank you very much, Chairman, and, uh, please get home safe.